Black Mountain Board of Aldermen made 13th, 2019 meeting to order. Want to welcome everyone here. And if we would stand, please lead us to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, and we have this Mary Catherine Robinson that was going to give us her invocation. Yep, please.
Let us pray. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice. We ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Remind all of us, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that there are not only leaders, but also servants, and it is all of our responsibility to serve the common good. Remind us, no matter where we live, that everyone is our neighbor, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us. Grant them, our leaders and us, the wisdom and the courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, by the Spirit of love. This we pray in your holy name, oh God. May it be so. Amen.
Okay, for announcements, the first one, I want to remind everybody, third month in a row, the audience needs to remain quiet while the meeting is going on, because when people are talking and have a communication back and forth, it disturbs the folks that are sitting in front of you, behind you, and beside you. So please give them that courtesy and respect. And one of the next announcements, I'd like to have Scotty, our fire chief, come up, and he'd like to make a presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Chief Freeman, if you could, come up, please, sir. For those of you not aware, the 12th, this week started, National Police Week. So on behalf of the Town of Black Mountain Fire Department, we would like to present something to you, Chief Freeman, as well as the Police Department, to recognize the unified as one, protecting Black Mountain.
Our number two is our proclamations, awards, and recognition. And this young lady that we're going to be making this proclamation to is probably, not only is she an athletic star, but she's a citizen star in this community. And her former coach is going to have you step up and read your proclamation for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say it's a real honor for me to be able to do this for Chesney. For those of you that don't know, she played for me the first two years she was in high school. And like an idiot, I retired before she graduated. But she's, like the mayor said, she's not only a great athlete, she's a great scholar. She was in the top 15 in her class, but more importantly, she's a great person. And so I want to read her proclamation. Whereas the North Carolina High School Athletic Association held its annual meeting and award ceremony on May 2nd, 2019, which included a presentation of the PAT Best Memorial Trophy. And whereas the PAT Best Memorial Trophy is presented by the governing body for the state's high school athletics to the male and female athlete of the year in NCHSA competition. And whereas Chesney Gardner has been selected to receive this prestigious award. And whereas Chesney Gardner has set numerous records in her four-year career for the War Lassies volleyball, basketball, and track and field teams, finishing her basketball career with an amazing 1,946 points and 1,004 rebounds, before breaking her own high school record in the Discus to open her senior year. And whereas Chesney Gardner was named Female Athlete of the Year at Owen in her freshman, sophomore, and junior years, and probably her senior year, at Owen High School. And whereas Chesney Gardner has received numerous awards, including SunTrust Athlete of the Year, Western Conference, Highlands Conference Player of the Year, and MVP. And whereas Chesney Gardner is a well-rounded athlete, currently ranked first in the state in the Discus Throw, and second in Shop Hood. And they're having the state meet on Friday of this week, so hopefully she'll come back with a state championship. Whereas Chesney Gardner overcame tragedy as a child, crediting the memory of her best friend Cory Goodson as her motivation to succeed. And whereas Chesney Gardner has now committed to further her athletic career by playing basketball for the University of South Carolina Aitken. And now therefore, I, Don Collins, Mayor of the Town of Black Mountain, and the Board of Aldermen, are pleased to honor this outstanding student-athlete for her commitment to sport and for being a fine example of American youth. We are honored to present this proclamation recognizing Chesney Gardner, signed this 13th day of May, 2019.
Thank you. Alrighty. We have next is our citizen comments. The first two probably want to speak, and the second citizen comment on unfinished and new business. And then we have several here that want to talk about the tennis courts. And if you will, I'd like to ask you to get one representative to talk, and I'll give you an extra two minutes to three minutes, five minutes to talk to the board. So...
I'm Judy Uvanks. I live at 13 Daniel Lane in Black Mountain. I want to thank you for letting me speak on behalf of the MTA and other tennis players just one more time about the importance of rebuilding those upper courts at Lake Tomahawk. And hopefully, in one to three years, rebuilding a four-court complex with a water fountain and a bathroom below the lake. Our courts are old. They have been resurfaced, but they are old. And they see a lot of use, not only from the MTA members, which we have about close to 150 members, but visitors that come to our town, second homers that come, and children and adults of all ages. The master plan was in the town's 2007 capital improvement plan. This is now 2019, so I think we're just a little bit about to get there. At that time, we requested that the two upper courts remain there because of the aesthetic beauty for all that play tennis there, and it is a beautiful place to play. The 2018 estimate from Wayland Court Construction last year was $115,000 to build the two new upper courts. That included fencing, drainage, and lights. It is now up to $120,000. The price will only get higher in our courts and more disrepair as time lapses. One of the biggest requests that we have is that the town take care of what we have before purchasing or building other facilities. Being a retired fifth-grade teacher from Black Mountain, my hobby became my passion to continue teaching in some way, to offer the opportunity for a healthy and happy sport to have in our community. Right now, BMTA, with the cooperation of Black Mountain Recreation and Parks, has 24 three-to-six-year-olds in our Kinder Tennis Program that started last week. We have 10 in the seven- and eight-year-old program, and we have 16 in the nine- and 10-year-old program. All of these just started. There were 35 adults in our tri-tennis class last year, and our first of three adult tennis clinics this year has 10 participants. We used to have a health initiative in our town, and our volunteers, all of the volunteers in our, in our, in BMTA, worked very hard to continue keeping a healthy community by carrying on our tennis programs. Her, Bevy Walker, who was our Mountain USTA Coordinator and spoke at the last meeting, and the others who spoke before her, we passed out a calendar of events from BMTA that was given to each of the Aldermen last month to show the tennis activity that we have in our community. Having six 2019 spring USTA teams that are going on right now, the players come from Hendersonville, Brevard, Asheville, Marion, and other places to compete, and then they stay in our town for supper, to shop, et cetera. A lot of the comments about our beautiful setting also sees them bringing back their families on the weekends, and that supports our county economy. The MTA has helped purchase nets, belts, rollers, brushes, scorekeepers that lasted on the courts for one week. They ended up in the lake right after that because they're public courts. Our volunteers weed eat the courts, they spray Roundup, and they're at this, as we speak during this time of the year, they are scraping out the cracks and refilling them with, as a temporary measure, so our courts will be safe. Years ago, BMTA's board voted to give half of all the monies that we made from our clinics and our tennis camp to Black Mountain Recreation and Parks, which opened up, from what I understand, it's called a line item, $1,000 at least a year to Black Mountain Recreation and Parks. That has resulted in us giving over $10,000 in the past years to our town. I have made town personnel aware of at least three opportunities that it pursued, and if the maximum of each grant was granted, plus the $15,000 that BMTA has set hard, really hard, saved to $15,000, that would equal $69,000. If those grants are, have been applied for, or if they are going to be, I hope the opportunity is still there. That would cover at least one of the upper courts and more. A meeting was also held with the Recreation and Parks Director about seeking at least three bids for the upper and lower courts, so there would be numbers on how much the total project would be for your future planning. I ask you, if you have not walked the courts recently, please do so and see the condition that they are in. Carlos has gone down with us, and we appreciated that very much, and Josh has been with us too. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we hope to see the new courts soon.
Okay, we now have communication from the Boards, Commissions, and Agencies. The first is the Historic Preservation Committee Annual Report. Ms. Elaine.
Jennifer's going to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Board, Citizens. In 2018, the Black Mountain Historic Preservation Commission approved a certificate of appropriateness for a new gallery for Seven Sisters Gallery on Cherry Street. They approved a mural for the downtown Cherry Street bathrooms, and voted to move their meetings to quarterly. During that time, the Commission also approved five different signed requests for downtown businesses. In 2019, the Black Mountain Historic Preservation Commission again approved a certificate of appropriateness for the new gallery for Seven Sisters Gallery, because her time had elapsed, voted to move their meetings back to monthly, recommended some amendments to the Historic District Overlay section of the Land Use Code to help clarify between historic and conservation districts, and to make noticing requirements the same as all other procedures. During this time, the Commission also approved two sign permits. This week, I do have at least one member who will be attending a quasi-judicial workshop at the North Carolina Arboretum that will be hosted by the UNC School of Government, and we also have another training opportunity in August in Waynesville that will be hosted by the North Carolina State Historic Preservation Office. Staff is currently trying to coordinate with the Western Office to look at opportunities for different workshops for the committee to attend and for citizens to attend, as well as some field trips to get our Commission out to some different historic sites. So currently, the Commission meets on the third Wednesday of every month at 6:00, and we are currently seeking applicants for our Commission, and you may obtain applications at our website, which is www.townofblackmountain.org, or by visiting Town Hall.
Next, we have Marilyn Sabanski, Rainbow Recycling Annual Flower Pot Recycling Event.
Good evening, everyone. Now, our big event is almost here, and I'm here to tell you about it. You might just want to come, even just for a moment. Okay? Got a one-minute video that shares most of the information, and I'll let you watch it. But something really important was missed. Can you guess? The how. So I better share that with you, and I'm just going to keep it fun and lighthearted. The how is just three simple steps. First and foremost, remove most dirt. You can do that easily by tapping in most cases, you know, whatever you need to do, or if you like the simple, easy way, just squirt and hose them down. Next is sort by size, by shape. Obviously, there are a lot of round pots. There are square pots, and more round pots, and more square pots in every size imaginable. And there's even a hybrid that looks like a mailbox. I'll let you figure out which category that goes in. And then the final step is to bag the different shapes. We don't care what kind of bag you use, just bag them for us as long as they stay in. Now, why, if I'm talking about three simple steps, why don't we just do all that? Well, that's because we get thousands and thousands of pots, literally. They come by bag, they come by stack, they come by trunk, and they come by truck. And the cars keep rolling up, and people keep emptying their bags, and it's quite a process to keep up with it all. So the more you help us out with doing that preliminary work, the better off we are, and hopefully we can get home before dark. If you have excessive quantities, please, of pots or trays, I want to show you that. We also take trays, and these you can bag, or you can simply just stack and give them to us. But if you have excessive quantities, please just give us a call, an email in advance of the event. Our flyers with our contact information and all the essentials are all over town. They're at the Chamber of their library, and it's very helpful. I'll just share that this year, the closest place that we can take the kind of quantity of pots that we get is 170 miles away in Ashboro. So we, as being volunteers, we really appreciate any donations to cover our transport cost. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Josh, if you will brief us to it.
Sure. So 5A is adoption of minutes. This would be to adopt the minutes of April 4th, 2019 Agenda Session, April 8th, 2019 Regular Session, and April 25th, 2019 Budget Workshop. B is a call for public hearing for our fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget. Item C is a call for public hearing for building permit ordinance text amendments. This is for some additions to our building permit language in our town code to make sure we've got requirements in there for people to provide us proof that they are either have approval for septic tank or to hook up to MSD sewer. And item D is Black Mountain Center for the Arts mural. I briefed you at the agenda meeting for this. This is a mural that the Black Mountain Center for the Arts is requesting to be placed on the, I guess it would be the west side of the building. This is a town building, so it needs to come before the Board here, and then it'll go to the Historic Preservation Commission if the Board is okay with that mural being added, and that'll be your consent agenda.
I wonder if, I asked Ron to clarify for the public what we're doing by approving the mural that you shared with us at the agenda meeting.
Okay, just unlike most of the things the town decides, they don't have a, they actually don't have a decision role as to what the mural looks like, where it's placed, except for they own the building. And so the only action they're taking tonight is whether or not they will permit this mural to be placed on the town-owned building if it makes it through the other processes. It does have to make it pass through Historic Preservation Commission review, and see if there's a certi, and see if they can get a certificate of approbation.
I'll say I did reach out to the gentleman that's going to be doing the mural, Scott Arred. Actually, I reached out to Gail Jackson, and she told me that that is expected to last about 20 years or so. But if they do some settlements on it as it goes through that process, it'll last for probably longer than we'll be here.
Okay, ma'am. Alright, I have a motion to approve consent items A through D.
So move.
All in favor? Pass this for him. Alright, citizen comments. This will be for unfinished and new business, and I think we've got two folks. Stephanie and Erin, two different subjects, same building.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Salzman from Art in the Afternoon. We established in 2008, and our mission then and now is to provide quality education and care after school at an affordable price. And I've been able to do that with the help of the Town of Black Mountain, helping me grow the program. In 2008, after school, we had about six kids per day, and now we have between 30 and 36 per day, and it's been great. Now that we're established and up and going, I do realize the need for a more consistent rent agreement with you all. It's been based on the number of enrolled students I have in the past, and over the years, that has increased because we keep growing the program, because we have a really quality art education program, and everybody wants in. So yeah, we, I have been increasing that over the years. The issue I'm having possibly is that, you know, I know you're talking about this, and now you're thinking of basing it on square footage, and we do have a huge space, but a lot of it is unusable for teaching. It's more like little strange cubby holes and stuff like that. So I'm just, I'm concerned about a huge rent increase, which will affect like the 60-plus families that we serve. I have three teachers that work with me, and I'm, right now, I'm able to pay them a living wage, and I want to be able to keep doing that. And so my, I guess what I'd like to propose is that you, and I work based on school year. Like, right now, I'm trying to enroll people for the next school year, but I don't really know what it's going to look like. So I'm asking for more time, either give me another school year so you guys can figure out what's fair and appropriate. Or I would like to propose that, you know, we could, starting in August, which is when school starts for the next school year, that I have, you know, maybe sign some kind of longer-term lease, and I've run some numbers. For 2018, I paid nearly $7,000 in rent, and I was not paying in the summer because we were using it for summer camp, but now I will be using it in the summer. So I would like to propose, and this will be a 73% increase for my program, but running the numbers that will not affect my families and employees too much, that I would pay $1,000 per month year-round. So that would be 12 months of the year, so that's like $12,000 as opposed to the seven that I'm currently, that, you know, based on my enrollment, that I was paying. If you're not familiar with our program, I would love for you to see what we do. We have a gigantic art display at the Town Library right now in the Education Room. There's thousands of pieces of art on display that we've made this school year. We also, every single year, have done a charity silent auction for different groups of the community.
Stephanie, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Come see the show.
Hello, my name is Erin Van Note. I'm here for Swanonoa Valley Montessori School from 101 Carver Avenue. Thank you, Mayor, Aldermen, Town Manager, and Black Mountain Citizens for this opportunity to speak to you about our program. I respect and appreciate the obligation the town has towards leasing public property to a nonprofit such as ourselves at fair market value. With our current lease expiring in 2022, we are open to working with you to see what a rate would look like at the expiration of that current lease, and that timeframe would give us the time that we need to grow our enrollment. In the meantime, we are interested in acquiring additional square footage, if possible, in the office space that was left empty when Black Mountain parks and wrecks moved to its new location. Acquiring this additional space, we realize will come at an additional cost to our lease, and we are interested in knowing what that cost would look like. We are a nonprofit organization, and we are completely dependent upon our enrollment each year to meet our budget. We have to carefully consider taking on additional costs and balancing those costs with the money that we bring in through that enrollment. As a small organization, we are looking to grow cautiously and incrementally, so our expenses need to also mirror that growth as well. This last school year in October, we took on an unbudgeted expense for daily and weekend cleaning of the building, even though the cleaning responsibilities were not listed specifically in our lease. And our expenditures have reached our maximum levels of what we can pay based on our current enrollment. Fortunately, we have a few years to increase our enrollment before we consider a significant rate change. We are interested in being able to expand our program for the Black Mountain community and looking to, and our current numbers just don't currently support that rent increase and allow us to pay our staff livable wages. We are actively enrolling, and we'll continue to enroll new students for the coming school year through August. year through August, and if necessary, we are happy to stay in the space that we currently occupy while we increase that enrollment to support more programming. Just so you know, the ways that we are currently working to increase our enrollment, we are actively rebranding our school to Black Mountain Montessori. When we first opened in 2003, we were always looking towards an expansion into Asheville for our elementary program, and Black Mountain has grown a lot over the years and can sustain an additional elementary program. So we are looking to identify ourselves based on our home.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Not seeing any more citizen comments? Okay.
I just wanted to speak in favor of Swananoa Valley Montessori, if that was possible.
You did sign up, partner. If you had signed up, we'd have been glad for your step up.
Thank you, I didn't have to do that.
All right, thank you. All right, unfinished business, Hempville property. Last month, we addressed, I tried to explain what has been proposed. As the board knows, the present access into the Hempville property is by a road off of 70. It's basically one lane dirt road that passes across the railroad tracks, an unguarded intersection, and under the box, a box culvert under the interstate into the Hempville property. The attorney for the estate for Mary Hempville became aware of a road or an easement, or an argued about easement, comes off of Sunset Drive and come into the property, avoiding the box culvert and the railroad track, and they initiated some negotiations that came to us late in the game. But they have been working with Mike Begley, who's the property, they assert this easement exists, and of course, Begley's asserted that maybe it doesn't exist, but they have come up with a proposal that they sent to this board, brought it to you last month and left you to think it over. But the proposal is that there's a little triangle of land, it's right down the bottom corner tucked up under the interstate, which, if you remember, part of the Hempville will was, Mary left the property to the Appalachian Conservancy to be used as a park. The Conservancy doesn't want to own that while we run a park, they want to convey it to us. That's a legal issue we're working through, but I need to work out the other parts before I can address that. But the present proposal is that small triangle of land that this board simply say, we don't want it. What that does, it then reverts back to the estate, which they can sell, which will create some liquidity for the estate which they would like. Unfortunately, Mary didn't have as much money left when she died as she thought she had to her will, so it's been a little struggle on them to do some of the things she wanted to do. But with that abandonment and that, there's a proposal to sell that to Mike Begley on some jointed property. And one more little piece of the puzzle is Begley would like us to abandon a 10-foot white strip along his property at the boundary of the park property that allows him to develop a little piece of land out of there in exchange, and he would clean up the easement, grant it to the town so that we could come from Sunset Drive into the property. Josh and I had the opportunity to walk down on that little triangle I'm talking about abandoning. I won't claim it's not a nice piece of property. It lies nicely, it's, you can build a house on it rather easily if you get to it, but man, it's the noise and sputter on the face of the earth. It's like, it's like an echo chamber off Interstate there. As far as the park goes, that's just a little tail off of the end of the property, and I don't know as it would be missed from the, as a part of the park. Putting a lot of my opinion in there on that, it's just what that value that little piece is. But I guess to this board, the important, the important part is, how important do you feel it is to have that second access into the park property that doesn't have to cross an unguarded railroad crossing to get through a box tunnel? And is that worth it to the town to abandon that little triangle and swap out a 10-foot strip of land to get access for Sunset Drive? And what I'm asking of the board tonight is, is it the board's pleasure to abandon that triangle and trade the 10-foot strip in exchange for the accesses?
Well, you know, the, in addition, it's my understanding that we would be, if we did abandon those two, strip and the, the, strip and triangle, let's call it that. If we, if we abandon both of those, we gain a new access to the property that could be used, probably for, certainly for mountain biking, but, but could be used, you know, it could be used for automobile entrance.
Yes.
So we don't have that, that's something we gained. But we also, my understanding is that Begley's intention is to, is to build three houses on the piece of property.
On his piece of property.
Right, on his, but he needs that space to do so. And so, to me, it is very similar to the decisions that we make very often, but not without a lot of consideration in closing a street, because sometimes we close a street, we assess, we assess our interest in keeping it, you know, do we have any interest at all? But we always consider the fact that we might be adding to the tax base and further development in town by, you know, by closing a street. To me, this has some similarities. It's not the same as closing a street because we're sort of doing some swapping and so forth, but in the meantime, the other positive thing that we do is that we do provide the estate, it's not really our job, but you know, we do provide the estate some liquidity. So, and Hempville's were certainly gracious to the town in granting the, you know, gifting the property. So I'd be in favor of it and would be happy to make a motion that we abandon those two pieces of property that you've described, that the town has been given, or you know, was bequeathed in the estate.
All right, there's one thing that we had some discussion about, and that was a greenway access, should we ever decide to do that? It doesn't look like this is going to be something in the near future that we'd want to do, but we want to make sure, I think, that we make, we have an agreement with the attorneys and Mr. Begley that we will, that they grant us a greenway access if and when we, and I don't know if you can make it now or just like a promissory note, don't know.
Well, I've looked at that, and a greenway coming in may or may not even cross the property, but I can go back to them and say, can you commit to 20 feet along the edge of that property?
Yeah.
Or greenway.
Okay. So you want to hang up another month until we hear the answer to that?
No. Actually, if you will pass it with that condition, then we can be moving forward if they agree.
I'm open to amending my motion.
Okay.
You will? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All righty, passes 4O. New business, first of all, on new business, I'd like to add a item I, the traffic planning and design. We just got that in today, if I'm not mistaken, Josh?
At 2:00.
At 2:00, and that's something we've been waiting on as far as the study of Cherry Street and traffic patterns in town, and would like to add that to, to the agenda if it's okay with the board.
I'd make a motion that we amend the agenda to include it.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. The new business compensation of Mayor and Board of Aldermen. Ron, if you will give us this opinion on this.
Okay, that's a little twisty because of their charter. As the board may remember, a couple of years ago, probably even today, this board decided to create some funds to fill our employee, I think, fill a position, and to do that, you abandoned your own income. And at that time, you passed an ordinance in 2017 which stated that, where the charter provides that you can modify your, your income, or remove it, or add to it, or change the amount. You could do, you could do that, and so you passed that order saying, no more pay for us. Now, the way that works is, the charter prohibits you from making a change, which goes into effect during the terms of the board members who make that decision. So if we have a staggered board, that kicks it out four years. Literally, you've not been getting paid, not because of the ordinance, but because you just haven't, you haven't budgeted for it. You could literally, you could budget for it this year and get paid through November 2019. We've got a little catch to get along, is we have Senate Bill 138 out there, which will change our election cycle. If that passes, then we bump everything four a year, and although the ordinance only reads through 2019, I think it's fairly clear that under the charter, you could continue getting your pay through December 2020. You can amend that now by an ordinance that says, we reinstate our pay, and you have to establish the amounts when you do that, and you can adopt that ordinance tonight. It doesn't require any more hearing than this. The downside under the charter, as I read it, is that will not come into effect until after the last person on this board is going through a new election cycle, putting you out at 2022. If Senate Bill 138 doesn't pass, back that to 2021. I was going to save this for my communications to end, but it's significant now is, Senate Bill 138, when it didn't make crossover, I've gotten in touch with Senator Edwards', legal assistant, because is this a bill that's subject to crossover? No, it's not. So it's still live. There's being an amendment to it, and that's spooky. So I noticed around some more, Senator Van Dye has asked for an amendment to it that simply adds another town in the county and changes it to even year. But it does look like, I'd say there's 95% chance it's going to pass. But if it passes, that means that your current pay that you're receiving for could be reactivated through December 2020, and then you'd be out of pay for till 2023, and then you'd kick back in again. I can't get around that, that's why our charter demands us.
Say that again, not the whole thing. Not the whole thing.
Sure. But the last part, where if it passed, it could stay with.
I'm sorry, I said 2023, it should be 2022.
Oh, okay, that's right, okay. Okay.
If, if Senate Bill 138 does not pass, then of course, that'd be 2021. Which you also, would only draw pay through this coming December.
Which other town was added?
I don't know.
It's either with or without.
It was hard to find out what the, it was hard to find out what the amendment was going to be, and I didn't find out which town, and I wasn't able to reach Terry to find out which town she was adding, just out of notice.
All right, any discussion on the board?
Well, I, I think for the public to know what our thinking is, is important, and at least I'll share my thinking, and that is that, that I think it's important that the board is compensated. It's just, it's a lot of work, and, and to get qualified people to be interested in it, I think the compensation's in order, and I, you know, I don't regret what, you know, the decision that was made a couple of years ago, but I think it's sound policy to do so. And if an Alderman or Mayor doesn't want to collect their pay, they can give it back to the town and obtain a charitable contribution for it. That's what they'd want to do, so you're not obligated to take it, and you do get some, you know, recompense if you want to give it back, if that's not what you, you don't want to get paid. You can do that individually.
I'd like to highlight that the very, the reason we did this is because our budget was a little tighter when we did this, and the Public Works needed an extra position. And so we came to an agreement on the board and voted to rescind our pay to where we could add that position to Public Works. And things are, they change every year, things are a little better right now, and I think this is where we're at as far as the board is concerned. So what kind of motion do we need, Ron?
What I do need is, you have to decide that amount of compensation, and you can adopt this ordinance and simply tell me that you will reinstate the previously existing amount of compensation, or come up with a new amount of compensation, not do fill in the blanks before you pass the ordinance.
So, so the motion would be that, a motion to reinstate compensation for board members and Mayor in the, in the amount that existed when the board took action, took action, what's the date?
2017.
2017, just reference that, board action in 2017.
Yep. The ordinance doesn't say that, that gives me the number to put in the blanks when it comes back to the Mayor to sign.
Yeah.
So is that fine, does that work?
Nope, that works.
Okay, so I would make that, alter that motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? Passes 4O. All right, Josh, tax collection agreement?
So in your packet, you've got an agreement with Buckham County, they provide our property tax collection, have for a number of years. They've been charging us a 2% rate, and this is just an agreement for the next three years to continue to collect our taxes at that 2% rate, which it would be the total number of taxes they're collecting. They're taking 2% of that, and that ranges from, anywhere from $70,000 to $80,000 is what we, what we pay for that service to Buckham County. And I'll say their, their percentage of collection is fairly good at over 99%.
Ninety how much?
Over 99%.
Right.
So, so instead of us having our own, you know, our own position that does the tax collection, it's Buckham County that's going to provide that for us.
Take a motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Passes 4O. All right, sidewalk contract approval.
So you've got three contracts in your packet here. Two of the contracts are for NC9, which would be a Phase 2 and a Phase 3. The Phase 2 would be from Dogwood Lane heading south to Cheshire or Jane Jacobs Road there. And then the second contract would be from Jane Jacobs Road heading further south to Lakey Gap Road, which would be Phase 3. The amounts of both of these, the first one, Phase 2, being $18,000 for survey, design, work, and for Phase 3 would be $30,500 for survey and design work. I know there's been some discussion amongst the board about potentially using some federal funding to do these sidewalks. I will mention that that funding won't be available to be spent until 2022. The applications for that, for that funding will open in January of this coming year in 2020. It is, it has gotten more competitive than it was in the past. I don't know that we're guaranteed to be successful in our application, but regardless of that, it would be 2022 until that funding could start being spent. So you're looking at about three years to do that.
If we approve these tonight, Josh, it still doesn't preclude us from pursuing the funding, right? We're just moving forward.
That's right.
Because, because that, again, if we, if we, if we're able to combine some of the construction costs.
Correct, yeah.
With what we think we're going to be doing on Blue Ridge Road, and we're paying 20 cents on the dollar, and NCOD can manage it for us.
Right.
Then, NCDOT can manage it for us, then to me, that's an attractive situation.
Yeah, right, because those first two phases are, or the second, the second, third phase, excuse me, are about $215,000 for construction currently, so that probably will go, will increase.
Or then add Blue Ridge Road, and you've got something that works.
That's right. So that, those are those two on NC9. The third one is one we've discussed over the past few months. We did some analysis, I think it was originally was, talked about being in the greenway spur coming up from Black Mountain Avenue from the hotel off of Swananoa River. We did some analysis, and it actually will be pretty much an even cost if we do a sidewalk versus a greenway. I think, you know, staff is under the impression the sidewalk matches good with the existing sidewalk on Black Mountain Avenue coming up through, from the, from the hotel to Louise's there on Vance Avenue. And so that design and survey work is 25,500. And so that design and survey work is, is $25,500.
What's that last number again, I'm sorry?
$25,500.
Oh, survey and design?
Yes, survey and design.
And did you get the, did you mention the total cost?
Total cost of that is around $60,000. That's, that would be with design and construction, but.
Includes, includes it, yeah.
Any discussion, guys? Lady? Any motion? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass this 4-0. All right, Josh, Lake Tomahawk Dam repair design contract.
So, the, the south end of Lake Tomahawk, we noticed there was some, what we call seepage, I guess, from, from the embankment there, that has been happening for a number of months. It was brought to my attention, I'm guessing probably back in March or so. So we did reach out to North Carolina Dam Safety, to have them come out and take a look at it, to see what the severity of it was. Ended up being not, not that big of an issue, but they didn't want us to address it. So they, they recommended a couple folks to, to speak with. One in fact has been doing the work up on the North Fork Dam, S and E, S and M E construction, or engineering, excuse me. So we did have them come out, they took a look at it, gave us some, you know, a lengthy, lengthy write-up. So they're going to be doing design and inspection report, and some geotechnical work on, on that south side of Lake Tomahawk. The total for that is $24,850. If this is approved, we will, we'll get this signed and get working with them. We'll have to go, after they, they get it designed, they'll have to go through North Carolina Dam Safety, before we can start doing any kind of construction work on it. They did tell me that the construction shouldn't be too intensive, really just need to put in some, what they call toe drains on the dam, so the water can, can get out easily. So that, that'll be your, once we get that done, that should, that should fix us up on, on the dam there. Really just some maintenance that we need to do.
Any discussion?
I think you mentioned in the agenda meeting that, you know, if public, public remembers that we took all those trees, had to, take all those trees out and pack dirt in there and so forth, what, six years ago?
Eight years ago, isn't that?
Maybe four, four or five years.
Yeah, maybe four or five. And, and the key, the key word there was, we were required to do that. It's not a choice that, that the town made. The state required us to do that.
And so, I, I believe you were saying in the agenda meeting, that if something came to our attention, that that work wasn't done properly in some way, these folks can coach us through that a little bit.
Absolutely.
Hearing no other discussion, do I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Art in the afternoon, lease approval, Josh.
I guess this is kind of run, I mean, tact team, but we've been working to put these together, we don't have them quite ready for you tonight, but I think it's good for a discussion, right, on, on how we want to move forward with these.
Let's, let me, I'm going to mix the two together, because you almost have to. But to start with, the Montessori school has a lease in place, as she stated, is good for a couple more years. And it describes her space and the amount she's paying. And she said that if it comes to it, she could survive with the space she's got and the amount she's paying. She would like to expand into the space left for Parks and Rec. Arts in the afternoon has been operating under a memorandum of understanding. She came in and used and paid per head. Over time, that's evolved, she's using a fairly sizable space, and it's pretty exclusive use, as I understand it. It takes so much material to, to handle this program, that you can't move it out, move somebody in there to use the space, she's not there. So it's, it's, it's lease time. The issue is how much. Back to the Montessori school, I'll just look at, and these are, these are going to be rough and round, but Montessori basically paying right now $3,200 bucks a month. If we give them the additional space, which is approximately 840, I think, square feet, and you use that same square footage price, their rental amount would jump up to $4,069 a month. Stop there for a minute, let's jump over to Arts in the afternoon. Arts in the afternoon, if we rent the space to them, same price per square foot, that amount would be roughly $2,087 a month, something she described as way beyond her means at the moment. If we allow Montessori school to expand the space and don't increase their rent, and the debt, of course, that reduces the square foot price, if you apply that number to the Arts in the afternoon, the rent would be $16,95 a month.
$16,95?
That's kind of, you know, it's not particularly precise, but that's about. Now, I get to argue both sides of this. I'm reminded of the time that Abraham Lincoln showed up in court, tried his case, and the lawyer didn't show up, so he argued his side and the other side too, and then he lost. But, but, just historically, there's two things that play here. One is, obviously, we can't lease that space unless it's really surplus property for the town. If we need it, and it's in the Montessori lease, that if we need it, we can give them those at the end of a school term, we can get it back. And some of the earlier discussion was, perhaps this rent is at market rate, but it's a peculiar situation, and it does generate income that keeps the bills paid on the building. Talk to Dean about what's their utility bill on top of this. Obviously, we've got major maintenance, and we've got utility bills, and that's roughly $1,200 a month, just utility costs. So, one of the discussions was, do we charge rent and add a utility cost? And that, that gets even more fun, because if you're the Montessori school, you're adding, say, $800 a month. So you get them up to, you know, you're approaching $5,000 a month, will have them run off pretty quick. So this board's balancing act, as I see it, is look at the pure math, and balance that against the benefit of having somebody in there paying something, maybe it's not market, maybe we have to cut a more of a break, but you've got somebody in the space. The political concern is, are we giving businesses an unfair comp, break against other competition? And that's important as far as the school goes, because Arts in the afternoon is a program the town could run. And so you have somebody who's running a program, you could be running, but they're running at their own expense, and you're giving a little break to operate something you could. The school, on the other hand, as you probably know, you're prohibited from operating a school, and so the discussion about whether or not you're giving them an unfair advantage stands out. Right now, I'm not aware of any other school trying to start in town that, that they're competing against, so that's an issue. I've, I've, like I said, I'm, I'm running out of size of this coin to throw out there. I've given you the pure math, you've heard the school's interest in having that extra 800 and some feet, but they can't afford it right now. You've heard Arts in the afternoon and what their budget will bear. And one other quirk is, before we can do a long-term lease with Arts in the afternoon, we would have to run a notice, come back around the next meeting, enter into a lease. However, if you want to do short-term, she said she's aiming at next fall for a long-term lease, you do without that notice, you could approve a lease tonight through the end of summer, and then, between now and then, work out a lease long-term for Arts in the afternoon.
And doing it long-term would be in our discretion?
Yes. And long-term, I'm just meaning a year or more. Under a year, we don't have to do that, we, we're not subject to that notice requirement before we adopt a lease.
Right.
As far as Montessori goes, the lease is in place, we don't have that notice requirement. It's a simple matter, do we amend the lease to allow more space, do we amend the lease to add the rent, or do we amend the lease to add space and not increase the rent, or we don't do anything? They're in place, and they're going to go either way. Arts in the afternoon has got it, we need to, appears needs to be resolved, and even if it's resolved on a number, amount of rent for the next, well, till through August, that would serve our purpose, that could be done tonight without giving the notice. And then between now and fall, we're getting more details.
Fall being, fall being.
We need a school year.
And they're, August, August meeting?
And they're, when we, we did the lease for them, it was for three years?
I believe it was. Actually.
Because I remember like.
Yeah, five would like to extend it to nine years total.
About the Montessori school.
Right. Yeah. It's five years of right to renew, up to nine years. As you know, if it gets to 10, then it becomes competitive bidding, so we'll stay.
But, but we did, we did a three-year lease to be, that could be renewed up to nine years, but then, we also said, that if the town needed it, it was one year notice.
We could terminate into the next school year. We won't, we won't kick them out in the middle of the semester, but we can terminate in the school year.
And, and that would probably need to be the same with, with Art in the afternoon.
I think so.
I mean, because that's what we have to do. Well, it seems, it seems to me that if we, you know, if that's, if we, as long as we have that, the provision, that if we need it for town purposes, that we, it's one-year notice, and, and, you know, we can, we're done with the lease. And that also, it's not only if we needed it, it's also that if it became apparent that we did have some conflict, that we did have another school that said, you know, this is, you're, you know, we're trying to start a school, and you're unfairly, you know, giving, giving our competition advantage, you know, we'd have to consider that, because we, if that came up. But that hasn't come up, and we've got a building that if we don't have somebody in it, now, I don't know anything about any of this stuff, but my impression, understanding has been that it's always better to have somebody using something.
Picking up the bill.
And paying something.
And we've been taking that money and improving, putting windows and, and heating and, and air, and, and the whole nine yards, we've been taking that money and upgrading the building, making it more valuable.
Right. So I'm, I'm inclined to move toward allowing the Montessori school to, and I think we can trust them, I think they're paying what they can pay, and, and being forthright with us, that allow them to use the additional space as well. And in both leases, we just, if we give a year's notice, if we have to, and it's just, I mean, that's part of the downside, unfortunately, you know, for folks wanting to use the property.
For Arts in the afternoon. If we're reaching a decision on Arts in the afternoon, it's just going to be a four-month deal anyway. We'll come back later.
Well, I was only talking about the September, the longer-term lease. So, I guess the first thing I'd do, just as a separate motion, would make a motion to, for you to prepare a lease agreement, from, that will cover us to the end of August, with Art in the afternoon at $1,000 a month. Is that?
That would, that's the board's pleasure.
But I mean, that'll, that gives you the direction you need.
Yes.
So I'd make that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, Montessori School.
Yeah, and then as far as direction, which we're not, we don't need to give you a direction tonight on that, except for what we're thinking.
You said that if, need a motion, and I, as I heard it, you're willing, at least you're willing to let them go ahead and occupy that extra space, but not raise their rent. And I would need a motion to amend their lease to reflect that.
They're talking about for a period of one year.
I'm talking, well.
We can always let them out in a year, if we need the property.
Well, and again, the lease, even though it could go as long as nine years, we can terminate it anytime we need the building.
I understand.
But, do we want to separate, revisit this additional space every year separate from the rest of the lease? Or just roll it in and?
Well, I don't see why we need to, because as long as we can reclaim, if we, the town has a, you know, a need, a need, the government, town government has a need for that space that we own, and the lease says that we can, you know, with one year's notice, we can, we can, you know, we can do that, we can reclaim the space.
Back summer all the space.
Yeah, and it seems to me, we would just, that we, that, that takes care of that. Now, we could break out the extra space, but it seems to me, I mean, I don't know.
You've got to get that one year termination, and it doesn't specify that you have to take it all.
Yeah. So if we don't have to take it all, it seems like recovered to me. So I, okay, then I would make a motion.
The mayor was just ahead of me, I had to think through and catch up with him.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'd make a motion that we, that, that you prepare a lease for us to approve next month?
Actually, you may have a lease, if you don't have a lease in your packet.
I think maybe it went, came by email, or I thought one of them.
Well, this has been, it's been a moving target the whole time.
Yeah. Is it a problem if you just approve it next month?
I don't have a problem with it next month, but I have a proposed amendment to the lease in hand, that provides that they can occupy the additional space, 860 square feet, and the rent, and I've got it put down to increase to, but probably be cleaner by just bringing in a new lease, it changes on the fly.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, we'll just, is that just unfinished business then? Is that okay with you guys? Next month? All right, Josh, golf course snapshot.
So you do have, this lease is ready for you in your packet, and just wanting to do an annual update of this lease that we have with, for, for the golf course out there at the 19th hole, they're currently paying what we're, what, what is written in the lease, which is $333.33 a month, is what they pay, out there at the 19th hole. This would just be to occupy that space, you know, provide, you know, they do provide the food out there, and, you know, the lunches and breakfast for the people that go out there and eat, or the people that are playing on the golf course.
Continue doing what's being done.
That's correct.
Now, Josh, we talked earlier, like, during the winter months, they don't pay, but they pay more during the, the summer months, is that correct?
I think that's the way it has, has been being done, but the way this is written, it's going to be $333.33 every month. So if they want to pay, I guess, more than that maybe, I mean, as long as they get to the total amount, I think that's the, that's the biggest thing, right? I mean, whether, but right now, the way this is written is it's $333.33 every month.
Have you had anybody approach you that's interested in, in leasing that?
I have not.
No, advertised.
We have not advertised it.
This one's a peculiar one, because you actually rolled beyond your last lease, and you're just picking up with the same practice. This is putting this in place through the end of this year, and then we'll get back on schedule when we're renewing it. And the board can think about it, whether or not they want to see if anybody else is interested. Historically, I understand, I know that that's, this has always been a hard property.
It's, it's tough for anybody to make go of in that business.
My issue would be the, the cost, the $333.33 per month. Basically, what he's doing is renting a space, using it for his own business, the town is paying the utilities, everything that's being used there. So basically, that $333 is just, you know, for him just utilizing that space. My recommendation that we make it even $400 a month, straight through the year. I mean, to say, well, he might pay more this month, or he might pay more that month, I don't think that's something we can hold to. Think you may go ahead and make it a even $400 a month. I think that would be a lot more acceptable, especially at a time like this, when we just gave discussion to, to other ventures in town, that are not money-making ventures like his is. They're more of a nonprofit organization. So I would recommend that the rent be increased to $400 a month.
I look at you golfers, because I'm not one to weigh in on this.
That's $66,037 a month.
Yeah. When does, when's the typical time frame on this, Dean?
Well, the lease runs from February 1st to January 31st. So we are, I'm actually late in, in this getting to the board. This should have been five or six months ago, we should have brought this up. And, so he's really kind of into this lease already. The reason that you want that date of January 31st is, if you do bring in somebody new, you want them to be able to have a month or two to get their, to get established. Because if they started, you know, at July 1st, that's the heart of the golf season, and it would be, it would not be a good idea to try to bring somebody in at that date. You know, because you, you want to be able to provide for the golfers. That, that's the main purpose behind, you know, the 19th hole. So, I'm not sure I'm, am I answering?
No, that's right. I'm just thinking, this is the lease we're agreeing on. Is it just until?
It, it's until January 31st of 2020.
Yeah. Oh, 2020.
Yes, 2019.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it will be 2020, yes, that's right.
And, and really, what Carlos was saying before, the lease has always been $4,000. For a while, we had it arranged that he did not make any payments at all during certain months, but then he paid $500 and $600 during other months, because he knew he wasn't going to make any money in December, January, February. Carlos recommended he wanted just a straight payment across the board, and I spoke with Terry about it. He was perfectly fine with that idea. It still worked out to be the same amount of money. You know, he's, he'll have it easier in June this year than he did last year, because last year, I think he probably paid like $600 in June. He'll only pay 333, but it'll be a little bit more difficult in December, when he didn't pay anything last year, but he'll pay it on the 330 for this year.
And keep in mind that his income is not totally dependent upon the golfers.
No, I, I have thought all along that actually, it could do double duty there. But, because, I don't know if you people realize, but Steve Denning, who has Okey Dokeys, started there. So, um, it can happen. And, um, I, I think, from my perspective, it would be okay to leave it till, as is, till the first of the year. But I would like for us, at the first of the year, since this is, uh, this person's been in there several years, to re-advertise it or however you do that, and see what happens.
I do have it on my calendar.
Okay.
For mid-October. So that we can bring it up, and if we, if the board chooses to re-advertise it, that'll be perfectly fine, and I, um, yeah. But that would be the time period you'd want to do it in, so that if you did.
Yeah. Well, I, I kind of, with Carlos, I certainly understand your point. Um, I think I'm inclined to agree with Maggie, just because we're in the middle of, we're late anyway. And we've not even got a year left, and we're going to, and I think it's a good idea to, you know, to advertise, see what we've got going out there, and say it's going to be 400 a month going forward and, and that sort of thing. And, but let him, since we're in the middle, and we're in a critical spot, too. We, we want him to be there. It, it is important, the bottom line is, we, we want food there for our golfers. If we happen to fortunately get a weekend, it's not raining, and people playing golf, it would be nice if they could, you know, buy a hot dog or something.
Yeah, but I see it's still too, being two parts of accountability there. I mean, we kind of dropped the ball because we didn't catch it in January, February. But also, if I'm leasing somewhere, and I'm watching my lease, I know when that lease is up, and I'm going to say something. So, if this lease came due in January, and he by the same token did not speak up and said, hey, Dean, or hey, town of Black Mountain, you know, whoa, what you guys going to do? So the ball got dropped in two places, but I think one was more convenient, conveniently dropped than the other one was, if you catch my drift. But, you know, I can live with that, so, you know, which guy recommends, fine with me.
I'd just say, leave it as is till the first of the year, but I definitely would like to see it advertised first of the year. And, and at that, maybe that increase, we can talk about it then.
Well, I think, just like the golf course itself, his business suffered this past year because of the amount of rainfall that we had. So, you know, right in the mid, in midstream to raise his, his lease rate right now, consider, all things considered, I, I think that would be a bad thing to do. Now, if you want to renegotiate in January, that's another, another issue, but.
So a motion on the floor then to leave, to accept this lease?
We got a motion. I think Carlos made a motion.
Oh, Carlos. Yeah, that's right, I'm joking.
I made a recommendation.
Yes.
We don't have a motion yet.
Oh, okay.
All right. So, motion down.
So I, I make a motion to accept the lease as is till first of the year, or when it ends, the first of the year.
And we'll start with you and looking at it in October.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 4-0. All right, uh, orders to amend section 20-287, the powers, duties, and responsibilities of the urban forest. Who's going to talk?
Okay.
So what you have in your packet is, is some, some, some changes to the urban forestry's powers and duties. I think that when this ordinance was created in 1982, the original one, I think some things have changed since the 80s. So what you have in front of you has been proposed by the Urban Forestry Commission. I think they've worked on this for a number of months. And essentially, without going into every single detail, I'll say, unless you'd like me to, but I'll say, what their focus now is going to switch more to an educational type commission, whereas in the past, that, I don't know that they've ever done this, but the way the language reads, it kind of had some, some, uh, some authority dealing with tree spacing and getting involved in specific developments. And I don't know that they've ever done that, at least not, not that I recall, anyway, maybe back in the 80s. But, so the new, the new language is really more education-focused, talks about them being, you know, organizing and managing Arbor Day, which I think is a good thing for them to do, since they're the, they're dealing with, with urban forestry, and just, you know, monitoring tree health, things of that nature. So, I think they're just going to be more involved on the educational side versus where they may have been in the, in the beginning.
You know, I do have a question about, and I think these are good changes. But, I do have a question about, uh, um, part D, what is it? One D, or whatever, one, section 20287D that we're deleting, all about the spacing of the trees. And, you know, the commission, this is, this is being deleted.
Yes.
The commission will be responsible for establishing guidelines, spacing the city trees in accordance with size. It's all very specific, which it sounds like that might be a pretty good idea for somebody to be doing. But, but not, not the commission. And so I'm wondering, Jessica, if that's something that, you know, that maybe you should could consider? And, you know, because in, you know, what, I mean, what is good practice, and, you know, and if, you have to, some trees get damaged, and you have to put new ones in, or whatever, uh, you know, to have some guidelines might be helpful.
There are established guidelines from some excellent resources, like at NC State University. And I think between Jamie Matthews and I, that we can come up with some solid recommendations to have on hand that are consistent for the town.
Yeah, guidelines, you know, it seems like that's, that's maybe something, since, since it was here, and probably, I don't think needs to be here, but I think it maybe does need to be something that we think through a little bit. So, anyway, I might recommend that.
Sure, we'll take a look at that. I'll, I'll say some of our landscaping ordinance probably takes care of some of that, especially with tree, you know, tree, tree types, and what types of trees you should be planting, but we'll, we'll certainly look at some guidelines specific for downtown street trees. Be happy to do that.
Anyone else? Need a motion to adopt ordinance over 19-12. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Next is public hearings. Do I have a, get your traffic plan? Oh, yes, forgot that. Number I, Josh.
So I is a partner in a circular study contract approval. In fact, last year, I've been.
In November, we did enter into an agreement with Land of Sky Regional Council to do, um, really, the money's going to funnel through them. This is federal funding that we've gotten for this study. I know before I, before I got here, there was, there was, I think, a study done for Cherry Street, and there were some discussions. And I think there was a, a, a decision to go with a, I guess they look at, I guess, the entire downtown, really, look at circulation and parking. So what you have in front of you is from Traffic Planning and Design Incorporated. They were the ones selected to do the study for us. We've been, um, when I say we, Jessica has been dealing with NC DOT, Federal Highways, and the consultants to try and put together their, their, their budget. Of course, that had to be audited by NC DOT and Federal Highways, and it just takes some time. Don't know that I, we really, we're expecting this today, but we're glad we got it, because we want to get moving on, on this. I'll, I'll say that in, on the, on the fourth page, they are, they are really going to look specifically at the Cherry Street area first, and give us some recommendations within 30 days after we give them a notice to proceed. So, that, that's good, to see that in there. And this, this is almost $35,000. The town is responsible for $7,000 of that, of that money.
You've spent up almost all our $35,000, didn't you?
Almost. 16 cents short.
Any discussion? Motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, public hearings. Public hearing to temporarily close State Street for annual Christmas parade. Need motion to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
You all may remember last year, we learned the hard way, that there are certain ways you can close a DOT road and ways you cannot close a DOT road. Um, we learned that local ordinance for annual reoccurring events that the town supports can be closed by ordinance. And that's a local authority we have in the North Carolina General Statutes that applies to, to both of these that we'll be discussing tonight. So we, you have a draft ordinance for you that will close State Street, um, on the first Friday, I mean, I'm sorry, the first Saturday in December, and it also gives a rain date for the following. We didn't go for three rain dates, like we tried last year, but, um, it will be State Street from Flat Creek to Cragmont from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., and it's reoccurring, and this will live in perpetuity until such time it is undone by another ordinance.
Any questions? Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion to adopt the ordinance O-19-07. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Ladies, please. All right. Public hearing for temporarily close State Street for the annual Veterans Day Parade.
You do?
Yep.
Open up the next one?
Yes. All right, motion open. Public hearing O-19-08. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Right, this ordinance speaks to the exact same standards and the first one. Um, it's just for the Veterans Day Parade, also on State Street from Ridgeway to Daughtry. The ordinance states from 2:00 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. on Veterans Day. Um, we had a lot of good support for this last year. Um, the parade is very, does not take that entirely the time, but this incorporates time for setup and cleanup and things like that as well.
All right. Any discussion?
Uh, I do, the, the, what the general statutes were, this is for state roads?
Yes, for institute, yes, state roads.
So, for instance, removing park rhythms to Cherry Street in Sutton, but because that's not a state road.
You do not have to deal with this.
You just do that.
Correct.
Town roads.
Yeah.
Much easier process.
Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance O-19-08 as presented.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0. All right, communication from staff.
I hope you used up everything I had.
All right.
I got a couple things.
Yes, sir.
Real quick. Just a reminder that the town, town hall will be closed on Monday, March 27th, in observation of Memorial Day. We, yeah, May 27th, Memorial, that's right. And then, coming up, be thinking about the, the next round of spot or transportation projects. Spot 6.0, we will be allowed to submit projects starting August 2019, so this year, this August. So, if there's something in mind that the board wants to see. I know that the previous projects will roll over, and those don't count for new projects. So Blue Ridge Road, of course, will be on there, but we can talk more about that later. But just wanted to keep that on your radar. And then one last thing, if, if the citizens could be reminded that our boards and commissions' applications are due by May 31st, if anybody's interested.
Let me ask you about the road thing, the road, the, the spot. Uh, it's a state, a state road, North Fork Road. And, you know, it's like a lot of our roads, Paget Town Road is not a state road. It's not a state road, or is a state road?
It is not a state road.
It's a town road. But, North Fork Road.
Pretty sure it's a state road.
You know, yeah, it is. And, you know, it's, it's, the ditches and washing, and it's like a lot of our roads. It's in rough shape in some places. So, is that a reasonable spot request?
We could sure ask.
Well, I'll, you know, I mean, I don't mind asking. I'll, I'll reach out to the folks at the NPO. I, I just don't, I, I guess the first thing is to get, I reach out to them, but NC DOT would need to come out and look and just, you'd have to get some feel if it is a project that rises, rises to that level, or if it's really, we just need to beg them some more to get it on the repair paving list.
Right.
But it looks like it needs, maybe that, maybe that's what covers it, and it doesn't rise to the spot level. But, uh, that comes to my mind, because I'm on it more. Indeed, as far as a state road in town? Because our other, I mean, what's another state road that might rise to the level of needing repair?
Montreat Road.
Yeah, Montreat Road is.
But I'm happy if they paved Montreat Road, but since they paved North Fork, probably.
I just know that they've got a lot of.
Boy, North Fork is in terrible shape, I mean, Montreat Road is in terrible shape. So maybe those two together, and I don't know if that works, but let's, let's communicate with them and see, see if we can get that on the spot list.
And I will say, we do, you know, we have annual bridge inspections, we do every year, and there, there are a few bridges in town that, that do need some work.
Yeah.
And so over the next five years, we may, we may have to spend some, that may be a good project, too, so, just to think about.
But our bridges, if it's on a state, you mean, the town, bridges on town roads?
Brides on town roads, yes.
And we're responsible for those?
I think that we can get on the, the spot list for that, because other, other places do, I'm fairly certain.
Do they, do, if a bridge is on a town road, is it still subject to inspection by the bridge?
It is.
One would hope so.
It is.
And so, I, I think that would be important to get on there.
Yeah.
That's in August?
August.
So we need to.
So we need to talk, talk about it, I guess, in the next month or two.
Yeah, yeah, well, we'd certainly need to. I mean, however we make progress with that, I, I guess, the first step is to talk to Tristan and our, and our, and NC DOT, I suppose.
I think they'll put, they're going to put together some discussion points and start talking to folks about it, so.
Well, but it'd be better to be proactive. I mean, they're, they've got a telephone, and they're responsible.
I agree.
The folks at the NPO, or, so is NC DOT. So let's reach out to them.
Sure.
I'd be happy to work with you on that.
Okay. That, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Communication from Mayor and Board of Alderman.
Uh, I would remind everybody that the Beautification Committee's plant sale is, uh, this coming Friday, from 4:00 to 8:00, I believe, and then Saturday, 9:00 to 4:00. 9:00 to 4:00. If you get there late, you're going to be out of luck. Everything will be gone.
I'm just glad it wasn't last Saturday.
That's right. That's right.
Okay, I have nothing. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.